All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order roll call.
All right, roll call. We have Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Patches.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Jared Bramerson.
Here.
Harry Moyer.
Here.
Tyler Bunson.
Here.
All right. Pleasure regions.
A pleasure regions to flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For posting, a copy of this notice was delivered on four eighth. It was faxed to Star News for, it was posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building and at the Black Earth Post Office, posted on the webpage wwwblackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed for posting to the Cross Plains State Bank, Black Earth, or Hatch.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask to amend the agenda to include an operator's license for Griffin Parks of Black Earth Lanes.
Motion.
Make that, make a motion to amend the agenda as stated.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, we're going to move on to four then, public input. Hearing none, saying none? All right, let's go to action item five, discussion action on temporary Class B licenses home talent.
Yes, they have applied, hometowns have applied for their temporary license for games this year. They're starting.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and approve the hometown.
I'll second.
Okay.
Did we just, did we decide by policy that we just will, we won't charge them in purpose forever? Is that something in our ordinance that, or do we have to vote on that every single time whether or not to charge them or allow them individually? Is there any sort of an arrangement we could make for this too, that that would just be permanent?
You could.
Kind of secure their, just that we have this, because they're a non-for-profit, right?
Right.
And so it would be a village to non-for-profit, you know, private entities, and that cooperation might kind of steer has some other, you know, U R R efforts that we don't have to man, or that the Black Earth events people don't have to man. It could, it could develop into something really good if we.
Well, we haven't charged them last almost fifteen years, so.
Right, but if we just made it permanent in an ordinance that we are, that we encourage the private to municipal or whatever.
Wouldn't that require us to get the lawyers involved and do all the.
You'd have to check legally because it is a liquor license, right? So at least you can review it annually if there's a problem, so that's the advantage to that, so.
I think, I like where you're going with the community support, but I think it's a lot of overhead for five minutes of our time to vote on it.
And if there becomes problems in the future, then we'll, we'll have an agreement.
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, what would it be, discussion action on operator permits, hometown, Darren Helmenstein, Renee Bratton.
Actually Renee is with Black Earth Lanes.
Oh, Black Earth Lanes? And then you got paperwork with Griffin?
I do, yes. She came in last, like last minute, so, yep. Griffin is a renewal, he's been an applicant in the past year, and there's Renee, so we already have their beverage certificate filed, and of course Darren is a new applicant, we do have the server certificate here, there were no issues on any background checks.
Do you want to do one, one motion, Ms.?
That would be, that'd be efficient.
I will move approval of Darren Helmenstein, Renee Bratton, and Griffin Parks for operator's permit.
I'd second.
Any more discussion?
For operator's, of what?
Operator permit.
Permit, yeah.
Yep.
Just, just one question, is the, the alcohol awareness program different than the server program, or are they one of the same?
It's one of the same.
Any more discussion?
So, yeah, we're only giving one person from hometowns license?
At a time.
So he has to be at every single body?
And he is.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean somebody else won't apply here.
I mean Renee's often.
I know, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that he would have to be there every year.
Yeah, absolutely. Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion on annual library report, Bailey. Now Bailey, if you want to do the library report book at the same time, so you don't have to stick around for after closed session?
Sure, yeah.
Would be fine too, so.
Um, so I'll start with the annual report. You all have the packet, in your board packet, so I won't get too granular with all the numbers, you're welcome. But there were a few things that I wanted to point out, our in-person programs offered during 2021 went down slightly, but from 2020, but our in-person program attendance actually went up, so I think that that's a really interesting figure to point out. And kind of in the same vein, on the second page, the physical materials in our collection also went down, but our total circulation went up, and that was a result of, I did a huge weeding project, so I just got rid of anything that hasn't circulated in six years, and so we were able to get rid of probably thousands of materials that were, you know, on our shelves that weren't getting used, that way we can make room for some ones that are maybe more relevant, and that also dries circulation because of user browse. On the third page, we had ten thousand three hundred ninety-one visits, which is a huge increase, as you might expect, from 2020, because we were closed for most of 2020. And kind of anecdotally, I was running the numbers, and between January and May, we had one thousand two hundred eighty visits, which means that the remaining nine thousand one hundred and eleven visits occurred there between June and December, so we were extraordinarily busy when we were actually open, so it's a thing to point out too. And our uses of public wireless internet more than doubled from 2020, and that's because we extended our wireless signal, like into the parking lot, and then into Zedden Park as well.
It takes over mine across the street.
In your parking.
Don't do any banking on it.
And it's actually closer to triple, is not what I'm thinking about it, so we've got a huge amount of use of that. We had a decrease in the purchases of self-directed activities, so self-directed activities are just like kind of our grab and go items, so like our grab bags, and our adult take and makes, the community garden kits that we were offering, and like Halloween grab bags and things like that. We had a decrease in some purchases of those, if I had to guess, that would be because we were offering more in-person programs, so that's to be expected. And our items available through electronic collections had a huge increase, and as a result of that, the uses of our electronic materials also had a huge increase. And I think those are all of the numbers that I wanted to like make sure I pointed out, but I'm happy to like answer any questions that you've got about anything else.
Under your revenues, you're putting your fundraisers under other operating income?
Yes, yep, and that's also where the friends revenue comes from too, so donations of the friends.
Good. Makes work.
I thought Dane County was supposed to reimburse you at a higher rate, I'm surprised to see.
That's actually higher than we were expecting during the 2021 budget, so that's actually like more than we were expecting.
I always thought that they didn't tax, it was like almost a mass, but they don't call it a mass?
No, no, this is actually.
Because I haven't seen it now in two years, and I'm thinking, well, I've got it with COVID, is this just for.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we actually, so we budgeted for about, I want to say like fifty-three thousand, is that what new from Dane County?
Right.
That was forty-three thousand.
No, it was fifty-three this last year.
Yeah, and then we, and then we actually got eight thousand more.
Bonus.
For COVID, or just they, they bumped up, they had more.
We changed the way we, we reported it, just to be more in line with the practices that other libraries use, so traditionally it split into like a facilities reimbursement and an operating reimbursement, and most libraries like put all of that into the budget, but for some reason we were putting it into the checking account, so I changed the way that we were doing that, so that's what resulted in the eight thousand dollar additional revenue.
Good, that's fine, and congratulations on the grant, nice.
That's, that's the charity grant, is it charity grant, the humanities grant?
Yeah, it was for the digitization of Black Earth newspapers, I forget what year it was, but it was like from the forties to the seventies or something like that, so.
Under the revenues, what's the, I guess, correlation with Iowa County versus the other counties, they seem to have a significantly higher reimbursement?
It's mostly proximity, so we get reimbursed for services rendered to residents of those counties who come to our library.
Okay.
Because they're not paying taxes towards the library, so they're, part of their taxes goes toward.
So we're getting a lot of people from Iowa County coming to.
Yeah, yeah, and it's mostly because like we're so close to Iowa County.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's great. Good to see that other people other than just ourselves get to utilize it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that from an overall use of all of the services that the library, it's not just like circulation materials, it's also internet and things like that too?
Unfortunately, it's just circulation of materials, there's actually, there's a big formula that I won't bore you with, but they have like a cost per circulation to non-resident users, so like people that aren't paying taxes towards the library, and then we essentially like get a check for whatever the cost per service is, times the number of people that's at the library they work. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep, yep. Perfect.
Are you asked any questions? Want to go ahead and do the library report maybe?
They should be done in a couple of minutes, it won't take a month.
I'm all over here, I'll try to speak up. So, I'm trying to speak to. As expected, I prepared way more for this presentation than I did for the report, but we are looking at doing a base needs assessment for the library, just to see like what we need in terms of space for the next like five, ten years, that way we can hopefully get a plan together to have space that we need. That's still in the very beginning stages, but I'm planning to, once I get the report, kind of present it back to you all, so that you can be in the loop about that. We're also getting ready for my one-year annual review, believe it or not, so we'll be talking about that at the next meeting. And coming up, I've got a meet and greet on the thirtieth in the morning at nine AM, to give folks a chance to talk to me, ask me questions, get to know me, on like either a professional level or like a personal level, I've gotten some comments from patrons that, you know, they don't know me very well, so I would love to change that, but it makes sense, because when I'm in the library, I'm always doing something, so, so I just wanted to give folks a chance to sit down and talk. And I mean, we've got a ton of great programming coming up, something that I did want to point out, we started a teen advisory board recently, and we've gotten so many like good things out of it already, we maybe have four themes, but we recently did like a DIY stickers and chocolate event, and it was really successful mostly because of the teen advisory board members, because, I mean, we're adults, so we don't know what teens want, so we could ask them what they wanted, and then they would go to school and talk about it, and invite all their friends, and so we ended up having a really good turnout for that event.
Good.
So I'm really excited about the direction that that will, that that will take us in.
Did you hear anything back from Sins about the replacement for Angie Perkins? No, okay.
We'll talk about that at our meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking for a new like school representative for the board, but, and I think Angie has talked to Jordan about this collection for that, but.
I think she, yeah, I mean, it has to come from Jordan, doesn't it?
That one's of Jordan.
Yeah, it comes from Jordan, but I was just wondering if you heard anything.
Yeah, but we're talking about it another day.
Okay, good. We'll take care of it then, thanks.
And I've had one person approach me with interest to us, from on for the board too, so.
Okay, good.
Are there any questions about the report?
Thank you. All right. Wanted to D, discussion action on Wisconsin Heights PTO request, waiver of park and amplified device.
Yes, so they have applied obviously to the Sutton's Park on May twentieth, and they're basically.
I'm making a motion to approve the waiver, waiving of the fees and amplified devices.
I'll second that. Nice to see him coming back to the discussion.
Yeah, finally.
Yeah, right?
Last year they didn't.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion action on Horrible Hillie Hundred Street permit for June eighteenth.
Yeah, so they usually ask for a street closure as we come through, that that bicycle ride that brings in eight hundred to a thousand bicycles, June eighteen is very much, right? So they have a special permit for order, according to Center Street, or they get the cost of K P, what needs to be.
Same, that's true, right?
Yeah, we do have their, we do have their certificate of liability, they will be at Community Park.
They'll bring in their own bathrooms and stuff.
Well, they may, they may or may not.
So last year Horrible Hillie was at Community Park. I had to come in because they called to have a garden hose ran from the new concession building all the way over to the far Bugsley Shelter. Don't believe we did any type of road closure last year.
No, usually.
And I know Cartman's had some issues with bike race, but we've never done any closures, I think they've asked for it, but.
Well, they're gonna be coming through the community, they typically will come down Park Street, down to Center, over to K P.
Yep.
So I don't know if there'll be any real closure, but more of a, they also have to find two Dane County Highway Departments.
Yeah, because they bring in their own.
That's right.
Blackers, traffic people, whatever, so. But did they actually file for a road closure, or was it just for the park?
The street use, just for.
Street use, okay, perfect.
So you don't have to put up any closure signs?
Not closure.
No, yeah, we, yeah, we haven't put any closure signs up for traffic marking from us. Did they ask for the water this time?
I have nothing that's asking for water, no, so if they did that last year, you said that they just call you for it?
Yep, that, I, somehow they got a hold of the on-call phone number, they called that, so.
What were they, what were they using?
They charged with the on-call, call-in, or payout, whatever you want to say, so I don't know if that ever went back to Horrible Hillie or not. What was the water for? Filling up, filling up, or drugs, however, because I know a few years ago, I think it was super hot, I think we set a full tank or something, didn't we, out there one?
Yeah, one time, yeah.
Didn't they contact you and ask to, they would help pay for something to get water over there, or was that somebody else?
No, that was.
I was just wondering, but.
Yeah, I guess if there's any reason that we get called in, we'll definitely keep note of the time, and then that can go back towards them, so.
Yeah.
Do we have any way?
Kind of insurance on file, they pay the deposit or mail.
They're usually really good about cleaning up, I mean, the garbage and stuff like that, they take it with them, so, I don't think we've ever had any issues with them coming through the parks and that.
Do we need, or do we even have the ability to track how much water they use, just in case they do?
Yeah, just through a meter.
Water gets kind of expensive, so.
Just through a meter, yep, so I mean, we could read it that morning if they use it, but it was only a few, maybe two hundred gallons.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. They use a thousand gallons or a couple hundred?
Forty-five dollars.
Water put on the meter.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, but there's still a lot of setup at home.
Yeah, which way you look at it. As it gets closer.
A minimum amount is a good idea. I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve it.
I'd second.
Should we not charge them for the water though, or maybe just that's.
I don't think it's so much for the water as the time.
Yeah.
For the overtime done at weekend for Matt to come in.
Right.
Yeah.
Should we call them ahead of time?
Yeah, I would, yeah, we'll see if they need something. Yeah, it's better to know ahead of time for sure.
We don't want to tear them off by, you know, making it.
But it's their responsibility.
Correct, yeah, they should notify us ahead of time if they need.
Right, but we want to bring events in and.
I live right on Center Street, and if they don't want to pay it, they can contact me and I'll put a hose out for them.
There you go.
No problem.
Yeah, and I think it's more about.
And my son will also be there with a lemonade stand.
There you go. It's more about the coordination and the overtime.
Yep. All right, got first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion action on request for proposal of economic development grant planning.
Yeah.
Kind of.
It's kind of.
Not really the way to, I mean, yes and no.
Right, right, I wasn't quite sure how to word that one for you, but it stems from our discussions of grant writing and planning and parks, and you name it, all encompassing to the village, so.
Kind of came up a couple of different ways, I mean, Mary had brought it up at a EDC meeting, along with Parks.
Yeah.
Also brought it up as a need, and then it came up, where else did it come up?
Definitely could be used for Public Works.
Public Works, you're right.
There are grants out there for women's, street projects, stormwater stuff.
Right.
So if you had a grant writer as a whole for the entire.
Well, it's more, it's more than just grant writing, you know, it's planning as well, because as we figure out through these grants, I mean, obviously they need plans drawn up and cost us and it's done and whatnot, it's part of it, so, is it time for the village to bring someone on board?
Don't we go out for bids, and, I mean, there's companies that do this, right?
That's what I have.
Oh, okay, so we just go out for bids.
I think we should get pricing, right?
But we want to, you know, we have to find out what is it that we want them to do before we go out for that pricing, so if I'm calling people or putting something together to send out, what am I putting in there? What do we want? You want to do it.
I think it'd be worthwhile to look at, I don't know what the cost is, is a problem, right?
Well, that's what we go off.
And the benefits, right?
That way they can send us in whatever it is, like a cost on an hourly basis, or if we do a flat rate, I mean, that's.
If it costs you forty thousand and you bring in ten, it's really not worth it. But if you spend ten and bring in a hundred, it's well worth it.
There's a lot of grants out there, it's about how you grade it.
The league have, won't they assist in grant writing? I mean, remember the league, right?
League's not gonna do grant writing for you.
They won't, huh?
They might be able to direct you, but they wouldn't do that.
Well, can we find out where to work in other communities? Or for hiring a company to do it?
I guess you'd want to see, you know, we could get to any company for cheapest price, but yet you want to see like.
You want to see what's done.
Yeah, have you had, seventy percent, or have you had seventy-five percent?
I really think there's some value in it, I really do, it's just.
I highly recommend that we talk to Jason Fields, because he gave me that list of eight, and of course I'm looking for it, and I put it under something, and I can't find it, but I will find it, of not only the people that design it and do the planning, but then also write the grant for you. The only company, the one that was highly recommended to me, that was easy to work with, used to be Wisconsin based, they are Minnesota based now, however, they come to Wisconsin a lot and do it, E O R, it's called, they do both, and they're, he said he couldn't recall how reasonable, but they're really in tune with the wetlands in this area, they know the history, it'd be nice if we had somebody that had a little bit of background about us, so walking in that they, they know what they're, they know where they are, they know that they're in the drift lift, they kind of get the feel for the play, so I'm not recommending anyone over anyone, I'm saying that it was recommended to me by somebody who knows our wetlands really well here, Wisconsin Wetlands, state's name, and he said E O R is going to be a, a good choice for that reason, and they work with them, the state works with them a lot, and so they're familiar with our area.
But we also want somebody that does more than just wants writing, like wetland, if that's all they do.
No, 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 that's not all they do, they've used them for that, for projects, and the state has used them for their different planning, and, so you just have to contact them and see if they. But that, they, he said that they're very professional, top notch, and it just sounded like a, a good, but there was a list also, and I will find the list, but I got that from Jason.
I guess the thought is, to pursue it, we got to have some interest in it, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise we don't want to waste our time and come to the board.
It has to come basically, I think, from a committee level, you want, what was Parks interested, what would Public Works be wanting, you know?
Yeah.
We could all, at a committee level, address that.
Yeah, and then bring it back to, yeah.
I would, I would say that each committee, if you have, if each committee has an interest in it, they should agree on like one topic, that maybe this company or firm, if we put it out to request for bids or quotes or rates, you know, Public Works can say, we're looking for grants that would address capital investments for equipment, and Parks is looking for grants that would, you know, address surface, surface water runoff, or mosquito control, or something, you know, something like that, that's more an application service type thing, or, and emergency management would be looking for stuff that would help with.
Generator.
Stream water mitigation, or a generator, or capital investment, so like, I would say there, there should be like, each one should bring one, one topic, and between the committees, we would then have five ideas.
So then there'd be five different things for this company to say whether or not they could do it or not.
Yeah, exactly, because there, there are those specialty firms that are, you know, they specialize in real estate grants, and then other firms specialize in capital stock and others in.
So let's, let's committees, let's send it back to committees for them, but let's start looking at pricing and at least contacting people to give a risk.
When I say that?
Yeah, I want to like at least start reaching out to you, because that's going to be a two-month process before we get to that.
Absolutely. We need a motion to do the RFP stuff, or?
Think so, no, it's only talking.
I like that though, it's tended to committees and coming back with a game plan.
Yes, and, you know, it, it could be something as simple as having somebody who just knows where to look and organize and get all this stuff, to then tell us, this is a good one you should apply for, this one's a waste of your time, et cetera, and then maybe we can do the completion on our own, so.
Do we want to set how, how many items each committee, do we want to set just like one or two?
I would go two, that way you got a right of things. Right, and if something doesn't, like you say, that's something that isn't feasible, then we can get that one out. Any more? All right, discussion action regarding Village Board Minutes, three, one, twenty, twenty-two.
I'd have approval.
Second, I just have one question on that. The fifty-dollar monthly charge, did we call Payment Service Network and ask to be, for that fee to be waived?
They are working on it, but at the same time, our civic system is also looking at an implementation of the same service at no charge, so.
Okay, so there's competition out there? Okay, good.
They're just not quite, Civic's not quite up and ready to make that happen to get the testing in.
Okay, is that the same company, that's the same Vanguard uses for their software?
And that's who we have too. I know.
I get paid for a few months to get the software.
I know.
All right, so that's in the works, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion action on financials, Treasury report.
All right, your treasurer's report. All right, your Treasury's report, the South is through February this time. At this point, all accounts are sitting at about four point four million. We have reserved accounts of one point eight million of that, that would be your electric fee and library fee, fees reserved. Uh, February tax settlements went out for about eight hundred and six thousand dollars, and also in February, we did pay some principal and interest on a couple loans, about four hundred and fifty thousand. Do have some principal and interest payments coming up here in the month of April for an additional hundred and sixty thousand. Moving to revenue and expense reports that are in your packet. Those are through the month of March, typically at least on the utilities, we should see about twenty-five percent at this point. On our general fund side, our revenues are sitting at six point three percent. Remember that those revenues will sit low until July, August, when all the tax funds do come in as a whole. Our expenses are sitting at about nineteen and a half percent. On the electric side, our revenues, actually, all utilities are sitting at revenues at about twenty-two percent. We're a little under that twenty-five percent expectancy. On the electric side, expenses are sitting at twenty percent, water expenses are at sixteen percent, steward expenses are at twelve percent. Those revenues are down in our large power customers. It appears that our residential and general service are right around that twenty-five percent. I'm not sure why the large power are slightly running down, but that's. Also on financial things for the month, our electric rate case is in, as of March eighteenth. Public Service Commission noted this last week on Thursday to approve moving ahead with that rate increase. So over the next couple of months, they'll be giving some requests back for more information, sending up the public hearing and whatnot. Recycling grant report was submitted as well. Our water and electric annual reports that are due to the T S B are being finalized, the drafts are on my desk, that I do, do by the end of the month. Uh, the annual U.S. Department of Energy report is done and in. We will have carryover resolution in front of the Village Board, probably at next month's meeting. I know Bailey is going through her expenses there, as I finish on the Village side. And the first ARPA report is due by the end of this month as well, and I'll be getting. That's what I have on your financials, I know.
How are we doing on that ARPA funding?
Well, the only thing we've had expended is the server at this point, so we'll have to, you know, hopefully update this with the total that we have, what's been expended, and figure out where everybody's going.
Are those on a timeline, do, are those funds, do they use by a certain time?
Uh, we leave twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Had a lot of broadband people calling to see if we will give them our ARPA funding.
Not that.
Yeah.
Not street, let's not sweep our streets or get our generators.
All right, that's it for your Treasury's report and financials.
Make a motion, we approve the Treasury's report and financials as presented, second. New discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Session action on invoices to be paid.
I handed out on the table side, just to, I think, maybe a handful of other invoices that came in after I sent out the, um, packet. Those included all of the other invoices.
I was gonna bring up that Haxley, a lot of that was school property, closures and stuff, and some of it was on restitution for the Lathrow.
What's Lathrow?
Um, that was the embezzlement fund that. Um, the, the county or state had decided that they were going to discharge her from that liability, so we'd have to go after personally through collections.
I'm getting that set up. So owed between Vanguard and the village.
You don't, you don't have to pay tickets anymore, you don't go to jail, you just settle the collection.
About a hundred and thirty thousand.
It's okay. You think that's all, right?
About a hundred and thirty thousand is the outstanding.
The county's discharging them?
Putting it as a lien on her personal property, so for us to be able to go after it, we have to.
So we just line up and feed back. The release was, so what position does that put us at the feed bag? Does that put us number one horse, or does that put us three bag?
Well, aren't we the only ones that did it, too?
Vanguard.
Oh, they, oh.
So anyways, that's what that's for, just our rain holes and.
Okay.
Not a lot, but it's there, so.
We'll have another one.
There'll be a little bit more, yep. Are we done with school property at this point, or is there still?
No, yes, we are done, um, the, you'll see that the deed was recorded, the survey and everything else.
Yeah, good milestone.
Huge milestone.
I just question, Public Works for the, um, fleet card and the premier co-op card, why are we still using both? Does the fleet card not work for premier co-op?
No, it's still.
Not in February.
Yeah, so we're just still catching up on, on the invoices from February.
So you guys are just using the fleet card?
Just been using the fleet card. Just hope I can catch up with some of the invoices.
But just that we had such an early meeting in March and stuff.
Okay, yeah. But actually it works at all three locations.
Can I make a motion, we pay the invoices?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Actually, I have another question, but I lost it, so if I can't find it quickly. Oh, the economic development account, can you explain that to me? Like, I can't find it where I saw it on the internet, because obviously everything was different when we. Here it is, half a second. Back of the first page, first item.
Okay, so you're going back to the revenue and expense report?
Yeah, so, oh, look, that was going to be my one question, yep. Can it be explained regardless?
Should finish invoice and people.
Yeah, we gotta finish.
Yeah, finish it up.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, Mary, let's go back, what was your question?
Um, the economic development, um, top, it's first item on the back of the first page. So can you explain that to me?
What do you want explained?
The first, it, there's nothing under twenty-twenty, then the actual under twenty-twenty-one, and then the, and then where we're at at two thirty-one twenty-two.
Yep, no problem, so in twenty-twenty, uh, the twenty, or the ten thousand that we had budgeted, we did not use any in twenty-twenty, that's why there was a zero there.
Right.
In twenty-twenty-one, that twenty-one thousand four ninety-four are expenses to field days, from the field days we done, we paid for everything there. And then in March for this year, in the actual, that ninety-six hundred includes the other, uh, remaining funds that were due to field days that were paid out throughout this year.
Some of that was income from that.
That's right. So, it just keeps confusing me, every time I look at it, I want to try and exonerate myself, and I can't seem to do that. So we paid, let's say, ten thousand dollars for field days, and then they gave us back? Ninety-six?
No.
We approved ten thousand.
Mary, maybe what would help you out, is if you look at the very front page under revenues, there's, under miscellaneous revenue, three quarters of the way down on that first page, you'll see a revenue account that says Community Park Field Days donation. And in twenty-twenty-one, you'll see there's twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars that came in for that. That was all the revenue that came in from donations and the sales of everything for field days.
Right, okay.
That by the expense account that you're looking at under economic development.
And the other ones, yeah. So we actually, so we, we have spent ninety-six this year, ninety-six hundred dollars has been spent from economic development.
That was paid to the field days committee.
Okay.
For money that was still owed from what we took in last year, and our commitment to the fireworks.
Okay, because I thought it was just five thousand dollars that we voted to give them.
But there was an additional twenty-seven.
Which they are in, it was their money.
Yeah.
It was not our money.
Got it, okay, all right.
Yep.
So the ten went up to twenty-one, and that's why it's back out there, and then we added another ten at the EDC. So the total in the account right now is?
We still have our ten thousand budgeted in economic development, yeah.
Yeah, oh, that's been spent.
Right, okay.
Okay, all right. All right, I think we go to J, consideration to go into motion, or consideration, motion to go entering close pressure pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data for a public employee which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Please contract changes.
Promotion?
I move that we do just exactly that.
Okay, and then I will do.
Do a couple.
Want to repeat all that?
All right. Roll call?
Don't make me do it.
Hudson?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yeah, yes.
Scott? Framerson? Okay, sorry, yep, you got it. Framerson? Moyer?
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. Mash up doors, Matt?
Thanks, buddy.